Madam Chair, I believe it's been the 10-second countdown. I believe we are now going live.
The May 1st, 2020 Virtual Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. A welcome to the first day of our annual budget session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pusky.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
All council are accounted for, Madam Auditor.
Present.
Right, and Madam Auditor is also present.
Thank you. May we please pause for the invocation which will be led by Ms. Rodvian.
For all who have contracted coronavirus or are fighting other illnesses, we pray for care and healing. For all who are grieving a loss during this time, we pray for comfort and solace. For those who are particularly vulnerable, we pray for safety and protection. For all who experience fear or anxiety, we pray for peace of mind and spirit. For those who are facing difficult decisions between food on the table or public safety, we pray for policies that recognize their plight. For those who do not have adequate health insurance, we pray that no family will face financial burdens alone. For those who are afraid to access care due to immigration status, we pray for recognition of the dignity and worth of all humans. For our brothers and sisters and siblings around the world, we pray for shared solidarity. For my fellow public officials and decision-makers, we pray for wisdom and guidance. And during this time, may each of us who have the strength strive to be a sign of hope, comfort, and love to their fellow human beings.
Thank you. And for the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Fiedler will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. General provisions, Article, Section 3, 102, 60. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to assure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to the legislation to be filed with the clerk and considered by the council. The county office of law has appined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good morning to everyone watching and listening. The packet of important materials that we use during our meetings is posted as an e-packet on the council website. Look for the button on your homepage. Today's e-packet contains all the budget bills and slides for a presentation we will be seeing shortly, among other things. If for any reason the broadcast of our meeting today is interrupted, please know the meeting will be stopped and we will be considered in a short recess until the broadcast can be restarted. We don't want you to miss anything. If we need to reschedule, a message will be posted to our website as quickly as possible. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the public or the news media, and we cannot physically be located in Annapolis, the county seat. So may I have a motion to suspend Rules 3-103 relating to the location of meetings, 3-105 relating to reasonable seating facilities for the public, and 3-106 related to reasonable seating facilities for the news media?
So moved, Lacy.
May I have a second?
Second, Councilman Pusky.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend Rules 3-103, 3-105, and 3-106 of the council rules is hereby passed.
Thank you. It is now my pleasure to introduce a video message from our county executive Stuart Pittman. Please bear with us as we get this started.
Thank you, Chairwoman Pickard, Vice-Chairwoman Lacy, and council members Pusky, Volkey, Fiedler, Rodvian, and Hare for inviting me to present, in my own words, even if unfortunately not in person, our proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. It's a 394-page document that, after your deliberations and amendments, will determine how each department and county government can spend the hard-earned funds that our residents invest in an uncertain time. How, some might ask, can we budget effectively? When over 30,000 of our residents have just filed for unemployment, when businesses are closed, when we're in the early phase of a battle against an enemy that is growing in strength. Pull yourself together. That would have been the response from my father. A World War II Marine Combat Veteran whose Pentagon job during the Cold War was to plan mass evacuations and sheltering in case of nuclear war. In other words, stop worrying about what you don't know, review what you do know, and use that information to plan a path forward. Now, my son, place your two feet firmly on the ground. Take one step forward at a time. Keep listening. You may need to adjust your pace or your path, but get moving. This budget is our path in uncertain times. So to look forward with confidence, we must know our history. During the last three decades, most of our local politicians believed that lowering taxes was the key to winning elections. They lowered the property tax rate 10% and moved the income tax rate down to a level that was 22% below where all of the other Big Eight counties stand today. The fiscal impact of those rates put pressure on politicians to spur growth, any growth, to generate government revenue. The growth happened, but the costs of essential personnel and infrastructure were underestimated. Last year, with strong revenue projections before us, we made a correction. For our schools, we added 140 teachers, 50 special ed instructors, and 35 mental health positions. For our teachers, we funded a long overdue pay increase that began to restore the compensation that they had been promised in their hiring contracts. We added 50 new fire and emergency medical service positions and have grown our ranks of sworn police officers by 88 in the last year. To establish and enforce consistent land use rules, we restored six previously cut planning positions and hired four new inspectors. To make progress on our worst traffic bottlenecks and our school construction backlog, we created last year a new fund for permanent public improvements that will pay debt on $250 million in new long overdue projects. To pay for this investment, we had to be straight with our taxpayers. We had to raise revenue. The good news is that both our income and property tax rates are still among the lowest in the state and are far lower than all of Central Maryland's Big Eight jurisdictions. Let's turn now to how we arrived at the budget before you. We started the process in January with the same system we invented the year before, seven budget town halls. One in each council district and an online build-your-own-budget tool. Then I asked each county department what they need to maintain services and how they could do better. Perhaps the most important part of the process is a comprehensive report from the Budget Office on the county's revenue projections. On March 13th, our best estimates were, as we expected, with a projected increase of $101 million over this year. Of that incremental revenue, we knew that about $57 million would be absorbed by non-discretionary expenses like debt, service on capital projects, pensions, and legally enforceable labor contracts. On March 30th, we received updated revenue projections predicting that our $101 million incremental revenue would more likely be $61 million based on the projected impacts of the coronavirus pandemic. And then on April 6th, that figure dropped again to just $38 million, $19 million less than those non-discretionary new expenses. The message was clear. This would be a year to do more with less. I want to thank the budget team, not only for the extra hours they put in scouring the budget for savings after each drop in revenue projections, but also for the role that they played in the final weeks of the process when my team and I debated the impacts of every cut, every investment, and every deferred improvement to county services that we wanted so badly to implement. You were patient with us, responsive to us, and when we were stuck, you helped us find a way forward. And I particularly want to thank Jim Beecham, our new budget officer, for a job well done on your first Anarundel County budget. I truly appreciate having the budget team led by a fiscal conservative who understands that what we are doing is more than just math, that every decision we make is impacting lives. And finally, I want to thank my leadership team who came together at the end of this process to challenge me, challenge each other, and protect the interests of the people they serve in this final proposal that we submit to our county council today. I noted that a budget in uncertain times is a path. This budget is a difficult path. It required us to make some tough choices at the outset. We started with a decision to accept the revenue projections as presented. An easier path would have been to project optimistically, increasing the possibility that we withdraw later in the year on our $80 million rainy day fund to pay the bills. We must do our best to protect that fund in this time of uncertainty. Last week, I implemented a county hiring freeze. With exceptions for public safety and essential positions, vacancies will not be filled this year. With the exception of those whose unions negotiated labor contracts before the coronavirus pandemic, county employees will not receive merit or cost of living raises. Instead, we will pay a one-time, across-the-board pay supplement of $1,500. Our lowest-paid employees will get the same bonus as those at the top of the scale. Had labor negotiations been conducted in recent weeks, I suspect that the outcomes would have been different. Very few departmental supplemental requests were approved this year. We made some exceptions for programs that had a significant impact on the health of our residents or that generate efficiencies in operations. A tool that we chose not to use in this budget was an upward adjustment in the tax rates to compensate for a shrinking tax base. Our property tax rate will drop ever so slightly from 93.5 to 93.4 cents, as prescribed by our revenue cap, and our income tax rate will remain the lowest in the region at 2.81%. Earlier this year, I proposed to build with the Maryland General Assembly enabling counties to tax income according to wealth. That would have created a tool to provide relief to over 98% of our residents by taxing annual income over $500,000 at the same rate as our neighboring counties. Early adjournment prevented passage this year, but I will work hard to win this authority in the next session. Our capital budget would most likely have been void of any new projects this year were it not for the new PPI fund that we created in last year's budget. That decision made it possible to keep the school construction plan on track, to start work on the Harold Harbor and Cape St. Clair Fire Stations, to start on a much-needed police forensic lab, and set aside capacity to match state funding for improvements on the Route 2 and Route 3 corridors, thereby moving them up the state's priority list. The budget also includes funding for the Brooklyn Park Cow Ripken Field Complex, designed for the new Deal Community Park, and full funding for the new Anarundel Community College Life Sciences Building, an extremely important investment in an institution that will play a pivotal role in preparing our workforce for the post-pandemic economy. I'm particularly pleased to report the news from our federal delegation that long-awaited funds to renovate Mead High School have been approved, allowing that project to break ground as early as next spring. By next year, we will have a clearer picture of the long-term local revenue projections and the extent to which federal stimulus funds might be directed to infrastructure spending. We may also see some shifts in our priorities to reflect a possible trend from office work to telework and other post-coronavirus changes in lifestyle. My last comment on capital spending relates to affordability. The last administration's final budget spent $73 million over the level established by our affordability committee. We brought that number down in FY '20 to $59 million. And this year, we've reduced it to $28 million, a move that can only help as we defend our bond rating in future years. Let's talk now about our schools. Education is for the future. And I, for one, refuse to let COVID-19 derail the work we are doing to prepare our kids for their future. The blueprint for Maryland's future is more important than ever. Both state and county funding for education will be less than we had hoped during the pandemic and its recovery, but as we build back better, we must not retreat from the goals we established to close the opportunity gap and create the best schools in the world. That is the key to our better and fairer economy. Our school board sent us a well-crafted and ambitious budget request before the impacts of COVID-19 were fully understood. The cost was $69 million over this year's budget. We can't deliver on that request, but we can get more than halfway there. With a package that is $35.5 million over last year, with $0.8 million of that being county funding. Crofton High School will open this fall with 57 new positions. We will also bring on 84 new teachers to prevent enrollment growth from increasing our class sizes. 12 new behavioral health positions to continue addressing that urgent need and the one that all of us recognize to be critically important. 76 new positions to work with our special needs kids. I don't know about you, but that warms my heart. I had high hopes this year for teacher and support staff compensation. A plan to continue with back steps and a good package for this year was in the works. Instead, we're left with funding only the step increase that teachers are promised when hired. That may be better than some past years, but it's less than our teachers deserve. I want all teachers and school support staff to know that when I talk in the coming months about our plan to build back better, their pay is near the top of my list. Our public safety departments, police, fire, detention, state's attorney and sheriff did not get the new positions they asked for in FY '21. But the impressive hiring and training they did in FY '20 puts them in a position to provide a higher level of service to our residents than ever before. I see that service every day, and it makes me very proud. So proud that I have to tell you a story about one of our most recent Police Academy graduates. On Thursday last week, Officer Keith Smith apprehended a suspect in a foot chase after an armed robbery. On Friday, that same young officer approached an elderly man who had shoplifted some food that he needed but could not afford. After telling the man that it was wrong to steal, Officer Smith paid the cashier for the items from his own pocket and gave them to the man. That officer's combination of bravery and compassion is what our Police Academy is producing and is the example we all should follow in this time and always. Within the Police Department is Animal Care and Control, a unit that provides an essential function, but that has needed county investment for some time. We will replace rusty and substandard kennels there, and we will fund one desperately needed new position, volunteer coordinator. Thank you to all who showed up at our seven budget town halls to speak for the animals in our shelter. Our magnificent Fire Department recruited and trained 50 new career firefighters this year, and we're very glad they did. They are on the front lines of the coronavirus battle, and their outstanding work is saving lives. We expect to complete the staffing plan that Chief Woolford initiated using a federal safer grant, but like many jurisdictions in that program, we must take a pause in FY '21. The department will, however, implement a very timely and innovative new program in partnership with the Department of Health and Aging and Disabilities called Mobile Integrated Community Health, MITCH. That program requires the addition of a new staff position. Possibly the most urgent request in public safety that we were unable to fill this year was for additional deputy sheriffs to staff our courtrooms. We were able to fund a small retention bonus there, but we must address sheriff staffing levels in the future. And finally, I want to give a shout-out to Bill Martin and his team at our two detention centers. You can imagine the stress in those buildings during a pandemic, but the safety measures they worked so hard to implement early on have so far been working. I often remind people that the impressive wealth created during our good economy failed to trickle down in the ways that some economists predicted. And when I do this, I often cite statistics from our community foundation's triennial report, Poverty Amidst Plenty. You've also heard me say that success in governing should be measured by the health and wellness of the people. So it should come as no surprise that the programs I fought hardest for in this budget were the ones that protect the health and wellness of our most vulnerable residents. As long as I serve the public, whether from inside or outside government, that will be the case. Within the Department of Health, we've included funding for some new initiatives, all of which I have talked about publicly for some time. Our new Office of Health Equity and Racial Justice will be funded. And its first task will be to implement the coronavirus health equity initiative that we launched on April 13th with a 100-person Zoom meeting. Partial staffing for the restart of Healthy Anarundel will ensure that this partnership and the health needs assessment that it creates will remain at the forefront of our agenda. Our crisis response teams have proven their value over and over again. They have been grant-funded, and we hope that the state would pass federal funds through to continue that support, but to date, they have not. So we will invest our own money to keep them operating while we continue to seek outside money. The beautiful new Wellmobile should not be sitting in a parking lot due to lack of state grants. We will fund the staffing to get that vehicle into our communities where it can save lives. While our current focus is COVID-19, our residents continue to die from drug overdose and gun violence. Both our opioid intervention team and our gun violence intervention team must lead our strategies by bringing together all relevant agencies, including health, police, fire, mental health, social services, and ACTs to save lives. We are funding one position to manage these two teams. Many of our residents have no health insurance and no medical care. Resident Access to a Coalition of Health, REACH, is a health department program that connects people to discount and volunteer medical professionals. We have added a position to expand that service. And finally, I want to single out a group of employees in the Health Department whose testimony at a budget town hall moved me deeply. School health staff. We expect them to handle all manner of illness and emergencies at our schools, but we fail to pay them a livable wage. I've budgeted $265,000 as the first installment in a three-year plan to bring their pay to the level of neighboring jurisdictions. It is our school health staff that have been redeployed to do contact tracing on every positive COVID-19 case in our county. They help plan the patient's isolation, identify those who have had direct contact with that patient, call every one of those people, and help them plan their 14-day isolation. While the state and other jurisdictions around the country are just starting to roll out plans to build contact tracing teams here in Anarundel County, we made a decision at the outset that thorough contact tracing must be performed on every positive case. This is the only way to isolate COVID-19 and make real progress toward meeting the standards that we will set for ourselves to get our county back to business. It is also extremely difficult work that is taking an emotional toll on our staff, and we must support them. Can anybody remember back to when we passed the forest conservation bill, the Styrofoam ban implemented, the green notes and blue notes at plan and zoning inspections and permits explaining how we now enforce our environmental laws? Through this coronavirus haze, that seems like a very long time ago. But the land use issues, they have not gone away, nor has climate change or sea level rise. As we isolate ourselves from one another to slow the spread of this virus, it is our parks, our trees, the green grass, and the flowers that remind us that we're connected, connected to something bigger than ourselves. Our environment still matters, and it always will. Our general development plan will be approved in FY '21. Then we launch the regional planning that will engage our communities, guide our zoning decisions, and protect our environment. That's why we must fill the vacancies in planning and zoning and fund the positions to manage the Land Use Navigator, the digital platform that will finally give residents the information they need to have a voice and planners the tools that they need to work efficiently. Our watershed protection and restoration projects must move forward. To confirm the importance of this work, I'm elevating our highly acclaimed watershed protection and restoration program to become its own bureau, the Fifth Bureau, within our Department of Public Works. And finally, I want to address the costs that our residents pay to subsidize new development in this county. Development impact fees are set based on impact fee studies. The last was done in 2009, but the county council set fees much lower than the study recommended at that time, shifting $127 million in infrastructure payments to our residents. I budgeted funds to move forward quickly on an updated study so that our fees can be set at a level that is fair to our taxpayers. An updated fee structure will also be implemented this year at inspections and permits to end a $1.5 million taxpayer subsidy of work that should be paid for by builders. I'm not opposed to new development. We have a need for affordable housing in this county and redevelopment in communities with aging infrastructure. By shifting development to communities near our train stations and other transportation infrastructure, we can reduce traffic and preserve open space while growing our tax base in a fiscally responsible way. While a pandemic and social distancing make community engagement difficult, I must report on the work that you funded last year in this budget to empower our residents to hold us accountable and to establish the metrics by which we and they can monitor progress. I cut the ribbon a few weeks ago on a thing called Open Anarundel. It was a virtual ribbon-cutting because it's a virtual location. Open Anarundel is the web portal for the work of Anarundel Stat, the new team that establishes and monitors departmental performance metrics. The web portal not only makes these metrics public, but also gives our residents data on their communities, status of development applications, and mapping capabilities so that information- status of development applications, and mapping capabilities so that information is location-based. We also restored this year the two deputy CAO positions that had guided county operations in the past, one for Health and Human Services and the other for land use. Ben Burge and our team chose wisely in hiring Kay Badgista-Brown and Matt Power, and I credit much of an extraordinary list of this administration's accomplishments in recent months to their collaboration with the talented leadership that we have in our departments. The most important piece of the puzzle is community engagement and constituent services. We've restructured this team by deploying three community engagement officers in the field and two constituent service staff in the office under the outstanding leadership of James Kitchen. It may be easier to govern behind closed doors, but it's not effective. So thank you for allowing my office to engage county residents in our government. So I've now reviewed the high points of our budget that I've described as a path through an uncertain time. Let's briefly assess the uncertainty. By closing nonessential businesses and establishing social distancing, modeling shows that we have most likely averted the kind of hospital surge that would have cost us thousands of lives here in our county. Even so, our two largest hospitals have restructured their operations and more than doubled capacity to accommodate hundreds of very sick COVID-19 patients. The staffs at Anorundal Medical Center and Baltimore-Washington Medical Center are the combat soldiers in this battle, and it's impossible for me to fully express the gratitude that I feel for their service. But thank you to them and all healthcare professionals. Our Health Department began this battle already weakened by inadequate state and county funding, but immediately demonstrated that it is the best in the state and one of the best in the country. Our strike teams were deployed to assist Congress at housing sites weeks before the state had a plan. Our contact tracing operation is quite possibly the best in the country. And instead of just talking about equity and access, our team has already deployed walk-up testing in areas where healthcare is least available. We knew from the outset that testing and contact tracing were our tools to isolate this virus, and we moved quickly. Our congressional delegation fought hard for and won over $101 million in direct funding to our county, and I want to thank them for taking the political risk that they took, particularly Senators Van Hollen and Cardin, who were up against a Senate majority that opposed local funding. I also want to thank this council for passing legislation just last week, giving us the authority to deploy these funds quickly to programs that save lives and fill the gaps left by whatever state and federal assistance may be coming to our residents and businesses. Our battle is on two fronts. One is against COVID-19 under the command of Health Officer Dr. Nalash Kalyanaraman. The other is against unemployment, homelessness, hunger, crippling debt, and that is under the command of myself and my leadership team. You've heard and read about these parallel efforts at our weekly town halls, in the Capital Gazette, and elsewhere, so I will not discuss them here. In the coming weeks, I will present a full review of our efforts to date and the work that we are doing to recover on the far side of the COVID-19 surge. Our reopening will follow the four-phase structure set forth last week by Governor Hogan, but our program will also include an assessment of opportunities that did not exist before. I've already begun and will now accelerate a process of engaging with community leaders, business leaders, and county department heads to identify new challenges and opportunities. That process will move forward under the title Build Back Better. So I'll say once again, this budget is a path, a difficult path through an uncertain time. It's not a Democratic path or a Republican path. I believe it's a responsible path that will prepare our county to build back better, to bring us back to the goals we shared before COVID-19, to set us up to fulfill the pledge we made just months ago. It's a path to make Anorundal County the best place for all. I have faith that we're all trying to get to that place, so I trust that this council will take what we presented and make it better. My staff and I stand ready to assist you in that effort, so let's get to work.
Madam Chair, I ask that you please give us a moment to bring everyone back online.
Thank you for that presentation, Council, County Executive Pittman. We will continue with today's agenda. May I have a motion that a partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
No movement. Lacy?
Second, Councilwoman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced today.
Bill Number 2620, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorundal County. Bill Number 2720, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill Number 2820, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Anorundal Gateways Special Taxing District. Bill Number 2920, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Anorundal Mills Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3020, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3120, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3220, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3320, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3420, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3520, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Village South at Wachappel Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3620, An Ordnance Concerning Property Tax and Semiannual Payment Service Charge.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now continue with, we have two presentations today. The first is from the Spending Affordability Committee led by Chair Mr. David James. I believe he's here with us.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Are you ready to go?
Mr. James, we cannot see your video. We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
What's up?
There you go.
Learning my Zoom skills here. Okay, are we ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. My name's David James. As we've already said, I live in District Seven, and I'm the chairman of the Spending Affordability Committee. This is my third time presenting to the council. We also, I think, have online listening, I don't see the pictures up there, of our committee vice chair, Eijaz Yunus, from District Two, and our secretary, Mary Clapp Saddle, from District Five, are online today. So let me start by saying, obviously, with respect to our budget recommendation that we made in our report in January, that's all overcome by events. It's too early to have any measured data to quantify the impacts of COVID-19. At state level, the most recent projection is a 15% revenue reduction. And as we also heard and were aware, that the county budget office is looking at this and projecting approximately a 4% decrease in personal income and revenues in the county for calendar year 2020. We, the committee, don't have any other data to validate that assessment, but I will say there are some factors that suggest that Anorundal may come through this with relatively less impact than the state as a whole. First, our revenues are relatively less dependent on income and sales taxes compared to the state. And then second is employment in the industries within the county. As reported by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and noted in our report, the largest industry in Anorundal County is professional and technical services, approximately 25,000 workers. Now that said, and also, as we've noted, the data does not include national security-related jobs, including all those at Fort Meade. As noted in our report, and we dug into this subject in some detail this year, the committee estimates that approximately 30% of Anorundal County workers, that's roughly 100,000 workers, are federal employees or contractors. The vast majority are at Fort Meade, making that location by far, it's not even close, the largest place of employment in Anorundal County. We have noted in the past that heavy reliance on federal spending is a potential long-term risk. However, in the situation we find ourselves today, these jobs are relatively less impacted by COVID-19 shutdowns and therefore provide critical stability for the county's economy. Bottom line with regard to this subject is that the county needs to continue to, I'm sorry, continue to maintain policies that foster the federal workforce at Fort Meade. It's a very critical part of our county economy. That said, there are other industries within the county that are hurting, as we just heard. The second-largest industry in Anorundal is drinking establishments, restaurants, also with approximately 25,000 workers. Other top industries include retail and general merchandise, 5,964 jobs; air transportation, 5,215; hotel accommodations, 5,037; clothing reattail, 4,711; personal services, hair salons, nail salons, laundry, dry cleaning, 3,465; gambling, 3,318; and real estate, 3,014. Now, when you add all that up, it's about 50,000 folks, 15% of our workforce, including a lot of small businesses who are directly impacted by the shutdowns. So with that said, and picking up on the county executive's address just now, the best thing we can say with regard to fiscal '21 spending at this time is to budget in accordance with the revenue projections made by the budget office and current fund balances, and then continue to monitor the situations we go forward when actual data becomes available. Couple of other observations beyond the fiscal '21 budget I'd like to highlight from our report. First is an observation that we, the committee, we understand our recommendations are typically lower than growth projections made by economists that are hired by the state and county. This is my fourth year on the committee, my third year presenting to the council. And what I can tell you is our pre-COVID report, January this year, was no exception. We recommended a 3.7% budget increase before all of the impacts came down versus a 4.3% growth projection that we're being given by the economists. In all the years I've been on the committee, we've consistently cautioned against budgeting right up to those growth projections. As we've noted, in recent years, those projections have always turned out to be higher than reality once actual data becomes available. For example, in 2017, the economists were projecting 5.6% growth. At the time, the committee represented 3% for budgeting purposes, and the actual numbers, when they came available from the Department of Commerce, were 2.9. In 2018, the story was similar. The economists were projecting 5% growth. The committee recommended three and a half, and the actual numbers came in at 3.6. Several factors might explain that, and we've dug into this a little bit in our deliberations. First off, when you're looking at building these models, you're starting with actual data. In the case of county-level economic data, the most recent actuals are from 2018. Yet the models are projecting two to three years out, because we're talking about 2021 now. Basically, you're modeling based on model data, so any discrepancies in that data are just going to be magnified going forward. Second, as noted a minute ago, the models don't include national security-related jobs, so in other words, the models are incomplete. And then finally, these models are sensitive to assumptions regarding the county population and aging. They can have significant impacts on the results. So basically, what we're seeing is population growth slowing down in the county and the average age of the county going up. So both of those trends point to lower personal income growth going forward that need to be paid attention to as the county deliberates future policies. So regarding our pre-COVID-19 recommendation, one thing I'd like to note, the committee has five newly appointed members this year. Like I said, I'm the one who's been around the longest, four years now. Despite the fact that we had five new members, our deliberations were pretty similar to past years. The projections presented to us were for 4.3% growth. However, no one on the committee advocated a spending increase of more than 4%, and there were strong opinions that it should be as low as 3.5%. The gist of our rationale deliberations were that the county should be run from a financial perspective, like you'd run your home or business. Don't commit all the money upfront, maintain some flexibility so that if things are good, there's extra revenue to spend, save, or give back to taxpayers. And if things aren't as good, then you haven't put yourself in a hole. And the COVID-19 situation we find ourselves in just underscores this point that we've been making. One new thing we did this year was to analyze long-term county spending versus personal income as opposed to looking just at one year at a time. So we looked over the last ten years. What we found was, over that period of time, the compound annual growth rate of the county budget was 3.81%. While personal income grew only 3.56%. If you look over the last five years, the gap is even larger. The county budget has grown 5% and personal income approximately 3.5% over the last five years on an annual basis. In other words, over the long term, county spending is growing faster than personal income. We understand this gap is largely attributable to the fiscal '20 budget. If you take those numbers out, the gap is not that big. So it doesn't necessarily indicate what things will look like going forward. However, once we get the numbers with the impact of COVID-19, it's going to skew this data in the other direction, and it's going to show a larger gap. So as such, we just reiterate our recommendation that the county should be striving for consistent year-over-year budget increases in line with personal income growth and guard against upward spending. Finally, one last point I'd like to make. This was brought up in our discussions but not included in our report. However, given where we're at, it's pertinent, and that's the rainy day fund. There was an observation made by one of our members who spent some time working with the Prince George's County government that the current limit on this fund, 5% of general fund revenues, seems low. Prince George's County structures it a little bit differently, but the bottom line is their equivalent number, 7%, versus our 5%. But at the time we wrote the report, we didn't anticipate the potential need to tap the rainy day fund. However, in retrospect and given the events of the last couple of months, it's probably something we want to look at, and the council may want to look at going forward. And that's all I have for my remarks, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, sir. I know we're going to have a handful of questions, so bear with us, as we acknowledge. I see Mr. Volkey is ready to go. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. James, thank you for your report, as always, and your analysis and the work of the Spending Affordability Committee, which I know is a thankless job, and we appreciate what you do. I did want to ask you, so I'm looking at, I really love this new digital thing, because I can look at you on the screen, and I can also read your report at the same time, which is really great. So I have it from January, and I heard you say that your sort of updated analysis, if you will, is to follow what the budget office is saying, and I recognize that you think that revenues may not be impacted as much in light of the federal government spending, whatever that may be in the long run, in the short run, that we don't see a major impact from that. What, if any, impact do you see on property assessments, on the complete, almost, loss of the revenue stream from really our second biggest employer, which is the restaurant bar hospitality-type industry? What do you see that doing in terms of the recommendation where you said that the committee was looking at 3.7% growth before? What does that look like now, if you have any insight on that?
Yeah, so what I'd say is, we really haven't done a whole lot of analysis. We've looked at, we've done back of the envelope, looked at this. We've talked to the county budget office about the numbers that they're seeing. And, you know, I would say it's too early to tell. If you look at the numbers we heard earlier this morning, the $65 million decrease in the revenue projections seem like it's in about the right ballpark. As far as how that breaks down and where it comes from, whether it's the restaurant industry or the real estate industry, we haven't really looked at that in that level of detail. Again, all we're doing right now is kind of looking at it at a macro level. I think if you break down the numbers that the budget office is looking at, they're looking at maybe an 8%, 10% or so in income tax, which is where the most significant impact is. they're looking at maybe an 8%, 10% or so in income tax, which is where the most significant impact is going to be. That, again, we don't have any specific data to say, yes, that's exactly right, or no, but it seems like it's in the right ballpark. So that's about it. What we really need to do is, as actual numbers become available, take a look at this. The 3.7% we're recommending, you know, obviously is a moot point now. So, you know, we have to, we have to look at budgeting to the numbers that are coming in. I think that's consistent with what the county executive just said, as we got to look at the revenues. Can't spend more money than we've got and go with that. So I think what the Budget Office is looking at right now in terms of revenues is a good starting place.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. James, I don't see any other questions from my colleagues. One last chance? Well, thank you so much. I don't, I think that was the only question for the Spending Affordability Committee. I appreciate all your hard work and the group and your team. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll take a minute before we our Budget Director as we bring people in and out of this meeting.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to let Mr. Yonis know that he can leave the meeting.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Beecham. It is your turn to present your budget overview. You have the floor.
Very well, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Anne Arundel County Council. My name is Jim Beecham. I'm Budget Officer for Anne Arundel County. And at this time, I'd like to ask for my budget presentation to be put up on the screen, please. Here we go. I am going to change this to a full screen view, if you'll bear with me. Very good. Can everyone see that effectively? So again, my name is Jim Beecham. This is my first budget presentation to the Anne Arundel County Council. I'll ask for your patience in this, not only because it's my first time, but that's where it's, it's everyone's first time doing this virtually. I particularly want to point out the other names on this page. Hoosia, Stephen, Naomi, Darlene, Beth, Hannah, Samantha, and Janay. This is our team. This is the budget team. This team has worked extraordinarily hard, but despite our decades of experience between us all, this year seemed to be a new thing for all of us. So we're going to run through this. It may take some time, and if you'll bear with me, be happy to accept questions when we're finished. So this is our table of contents. We're going to run through first how we do it, then we're going to look at where we are. We'll take a big picture view for fiscal year 2021, dive into the details, do a little recap, and then overview of some of the other components of the budget. So this is our budget process. It has been an eight-month process to date. So it starts back in September, and here on May 1, we're compelled by the code to present to you a budget. We'll use the months of May and June to refine and pass a final budget. The budget team will have a couple of months for a debrief, reset our data tables, reset our minds, and then it starts all over again for the FY '22 budget. The last few weeks, from mid-March to May 1, has been our crunch time. The budget analysts have worked extraordinarily hard this time. There have been email and text correspondence as late as 2:00 in the morning, going back and forth over things. Everyone's been really putting in the effort to make this the best possible budget that we can. This is our working calendar. What's not showing on there is the January and February window. That was the county executives' budget town hall meetings. I know each of you participated in those meetings as well. I had the privilege to sit on the back row for all of them, and I've found them to be very helpful in putting this budget together. So just a quick look at where we've been and where we are. You'll note the disclaimer at the bottom. We have, may have some rounding errors here and there. We're dealing with big numbers, and sometimes they round up, sometimes they round down. Before you hear is a summary of the revenue streams associated with our current budget, the fiscal year 2020 budget. The first column is our approved budget. The second column is our current estimate on where the year will wind up, and then we're highlighting the differences there. Our current estimate for this year, we locked in on April 6. We had to lock down those numbers at that time to start to fit the other pieces of the puzzle together. So I want you to keep that in mind. Couple of things to note there. You'll note under the state shared revenue, a drop of 5.1. This was primarily related to admissions, amusements, and table games. The drop in local sales tax, 3.9 million. That is obviously pandemic-related. There's lodging involved in there as well. The license and permits decline of 1.1 million. That's related to no activity going on. The recordation and transfer tax, we did not reduce in our estimate. The year started out strong enough that we felt like by year-end, we would still be at budget on that particular line item. When you look down towards the bottom of those columns, you'll notice the fund balance contribution to our total budget. So in the approved budget that you passed last year, we anticipated utilization of 52.9 million transfer in from fund balance. The revised estimate, 42.6 million. We'll look at the details here on the next page. So this is how the FY '20 revised numbers impact the fund balance. You'll notice the $1,643 there of the approved budget. That was the recurring revenue component of the budget. And it differs from the approved budget expenditures of $1,696. By that 52.8, that was the fund balance contribution to this year's budget. So it seems that we are going to have a little extra contribution to the revenue for this year than anticipated, and it looks like we'll be a little under-expensed for this year. So we're under-utilizing that $52.8 million by 10.2. We're sort of a summary of our, of our fund balance as it flowed through time. That 80.3 million, that number came out of the CAFR, which is the formal audited report of the results of FY '19. That is the formal number against the 52.9 that we assumed in the budget. There's a couple of reasons for that difference. One is, when the budget team does our year-end projections at this time of year, we're very conservative. We round down all of our numbers. And the other is, there are some changes, there are some differences between budget accounting and GAAP accounting. So between what we anticipated left over from '19 to be used in FY '20 and what the CAFR ultimately reported, gave us a fund balance of 27.5 million. When we look at the under-utilization of fund balance that we saw on the prior page of 10.2, we have $37.7 million that should be available at the end of this fiscal year for next year, and we're going to need every penny of that. Well, here we go. We'll dive right into the overview of the general fund budget as proposed for fiscal year 2021. That's a big number, $1.7 billion. That's a big number, but we'll go into the details of how we derived that number. So year-over-year growth, the FY '21 budget, there's that $1.719 billion against the $1.696 for the year that we are in now, 2020. It's an increase of $23 million or 1.4%. That is extraordinarily misleading, and let me tell you why. Last year, the county implemented changes in the tax rate that impacted the revenue in fiscal year 2021 for the full fiscal year. It layered in across fiscal year 20, a portion of it, but its full force and effect came in in FY '21. Those changes in the tax rates contributed $87 million to that $1.7 billion. If the county had not changed those tax rates, that $1.719 would actually be 1.632. So instead of talking about a $23 million increase, we would be saddled with and having to deal with a $64 million hole. These are our highlights for the coming budget. You'll see there is an increase in the recurring revenue. We can explain that in a few pages coming up. You look at that 2%, you say, wait a minute, last page you just showed 1.4% increase. There's a, there's a reason for that discrepancy. It's not a typo. In fiscal year 21, we are utilizing a smaller fund balance than we had in, had utilized or planned to utilize in FY '20. And we also have a slice of one-time revenue in FY '21 that's contributed to the overall revenue increase. So those, those numbers do tie out. I just wanted to make sure you weren't seeing an inconsistency there. The property tax rate is incrementally lower from the, in accordance with the tax cap. The income tax remains the same, the rate for that. Board of Education, maintenance of effort, $9,069 per student. The county has fully funded MOE for this year with an incremental cost of $14.75 million. This budget does include 14 new positions. They're generally all tied to critical service deliveries for the county. As the numbers came together in their final configuration, we are able to contribute $1 million to the Revenue Reserve Fund, and I'll have more details on that later in this presentation. So the projected balance through fiscal year 2021 will be $80.9 million. We are continuing to fund the Retiree Health Insurance Fund as planned. We are not changing water sewer rates, 0% change. We are not changing the stormwater remediation fee, 0% change, and same for the solid waste fees. There are five items on this page. The property tax incrementally lowered, the income tax rate remaining the same. Those three 0% at the bottom, those seem to be the right thing to do right now for our citizens and for our businesses. And we were still able to come up with a balanced and responsible budget. If we're going to have a page of highlights, unfortunately this year, we're going to have to have a page of lowlights. The pandemic crisis is not an economic crisis. It is a, it's a health crisis. Our budget and everybody's budget has suffered because of the pandemic crisis. The budgets seem sort of like collateral damage compared to the physical and mental damage that our community is enduring. But this was our challenge to work on the financial budget, and we have. This crisis is not like the financial crisis of '08. It's not like the dot-com crisis that turned into the dot-bomb. This is not like the SNL crisis of the late 80s. It's not like the oil embargo of the 70s. Those were all tied to fundamental economic issues and took time for those financial segments of the economy to restructure and reset. This is a different kind of crisis that our budget is dealing with. Because the economic sectors may not need to be completely reset, the International Monetary Fund, the Federal Reserve, economists around the planet, they're all talking about a reasonably prompt turnaround as early as calendar year, calendar year 2021. So there's encouraging news in the longer term if we can work ourselves through this really short-term painful period. I'm not going to go through and read you all of these things. I'll be happy to talk about them at your discretion. You'll notice one of the bullet points down there at the bottom is the working remote. Each of you has experienced what this means. It's been a challenge. I can tell you that with respect to the Budget Office, we've had virtual video conferences, seems like every other day through our crunch time, text messages, emails back and forth. We're all learning to work differently now, and we'll see how this, how this rolls forward in the new economy. Board of Education, the last bullet, Board of Education funded at base maintenance of effort. Yes, I did mention that on the highlight page, that the county budget did include full funding for maintenance of effort. The lowlight is, is that we were only able to fund maintenance of effort. I think it's everyone's desire that we try to support our education system more strongly. So this is that double-edged sword, good news, bad news sort of situation. We were able to afford it, but that's all we were able to afford. Our COVID-19 response. Since we last met on April 20, when the county council approved the legislation to handle the $101 million coming from the Federal Relief Act, we have received Treasury guidelines, and we're working through those. As we've mentioned, then, one of the most critical limitations of the Relief Act is we cannot use that money to replace lost or diminished revenue. So our budget is built on the budget that we have, and we'll, we will not be taking advantage of any of the Relief Act funding to support that. The last two items under the emergency spending down there, those are evolving strategies. The planning is underway to identify impactful channels to deploy resources. There's a team in the Executive Office, it's working as we speak, trying to optimize how we deploy that 101 million to make sure we have the best impact for our community. And the county executive is working with our EDC to see what sort of plan we can put together to support businesses, which was also an element that was approved in the Treasury Guidelines for the Relief Act. All right, revenue. This is the first leg of the budget tripod, the three legs, the revenue, the expenses, and the capital. So this is the first leg that we'll dive into. General fund revenue, 1.7 billion. That number's going to come up time and time again. And if we compare it to our 1.696 for the year we're in now, there are very few changes. There are some rounding errors in some of the smaller pieces of the pie. The only two material changes, the property tax has gone up to 45%. It was 44% last year, and the local income tax has changed by a percent, as well gone down a percent. So those are changes that have occurred between last year and this year. Here's our revenue by category. As mentioned earlier by the county executive, in the three weeks between March 13 and April 6, we were chasing our revenue projections downhill. We started out thinking we were going to have $101 million in incremental income, incremental revenue over prior year, and before it was all said and done, we were down to 38 million in incremental revenue. That 38 is in a couple of different components. There's recurring, and then some fund balance contribution and a one-time revenue contribution year-over-year. I'll dive into those details as we go forward. But I wanted you to see how our revenue for FY '21 compares to the FY '20 budget and how it compares to our FY '20 revised budget. You'll notice there at the bottom, our recurring revenue projection for this year is 1.676. We do have a slice of one-time revenue. This is a unique situation. By executive orders, so many of the taxes that are normally due by April 15 are now due are now due July 15. So tax revenue that we might get in a distribution from the state before this fiscal year ends may not land at Anarondo County in time to be accounted for in FY 20. So the one-time revenue that will wind up recognizing in FY 21 of $5 million is actually income that should have been assigned to FY 20. It's sort of a, an accounting indirect impact from some of the other efforts that governments, both state and local, are taking to soften the impact of this pandemic on everyone's pocketbook. And there's that 37.7 fund balance utilization that we will have in this year's budget. Property Tax Revenue. This calculation is derived from huge data sets. We receive periodic updates from Sbat on how we're computing this. This is our most stable form of revenue for the county. Through time, it's reasonably stable. It's not as dynamic as some of the others that we'll go over here in a minute. When you've heard from the state of Maryland that they could be suffering an enormous revenue hit, their revenue streams are primarily those that are more fluctuant, more volatile. And they're proving such with the economic hit from the pandemic that we're seeing now. But the county, 45% of our revenue is from property tax revenue, and so we have that stable underpinning to our revenue stream. I don't know if there's any other notes here that I want to, to go over at this point. So I will move on to the next page. This shows our property tax revenue over time. One thing we've added from a graph you may have seen in last year's budget presentation, we've provided that blue line, which is sort of a normalized based on this year's CPI, and we've backed that up to show that that's the rate of increase without the rate of inflation incurred in it. This is a complicated graph at first glance. To make it easier to read, I'll say that each year has three bars, a green, a blue, and a red. And they are basically comparing the, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, that by code, we're compelled to use, the, the January CPI. It compares that against the assessable growth in the taxable base, the growth in the taxable assessable base, and then shows the ultimate tax rate change. We can dive into that graph offline if you'd like some time and, and really try to go into the math if you'd like. This is what we refer to as the safety valve. This is the Homestead Tax Credit. Keep in mind that the, this is a stacked bar graph. So the gross assessable base is at the top of the yellow bar, being the sum of the yellow and the green bar. So the green bar at the bottom there, that is the net assessable base, and the Homestead Tax Credit reduced the gross assessable base down to the net assessable base. This is intended to absorb steep increases in assessable valuations on your tax bill. Maryland law allows each local jurisdiction to set this at 10% max. Anarondo County has taken a conservative view, and we by law have set the tax credit at, at 2%. There are other credits that go into the calculation. They're all pretty complicated. There's a whole page of them in the budget book. The other main contributor is the homeowner's credit. And between the two of those, it constitutes the, almost all of the credits available. The homeowner's credit, about two-thirds of that is paid by the state of Maryland, and about a third of that is subsidized by Anarondo County. We move to income tax revenue. As I stated earlier, our FY 21 budget has benefited from the rate change that the county did last year. There's a unique feature to budgeting income tax revenue at the county level that bears keeping in mind. Each given calendar year or each given tax year actually lays out across three fiscal years. So the calendar year that we are in now, we're in calendar year 2020. The last six months of this calendar year will be in fiscal year 2021. So the withholding that comes from out of your paycheck, everyone's paycheck, their estimated payments that they may make through calendar year 20, about the, the second half of the year will fall into fiscal year 21. The withholding and estimated payments that a taxpayer will make and, as well as the April 15 tax payment that they would normally make, that will fall in the next year. And then there's the final year of reconciliation. The way we model things out for any given tax year, about 43% of that amount will land in the first year that it applies to, about 48% will apply in the second fiscal year that it overlays. And the remainder, about 9% will wind up in the third fiscal year. This, this makes it confusing when we're talking about income tax because right now, in the second quarter of tax year 20 is the fourth quarter of fiscal year 20. So it gets confusing comparing these two and keeping them lined up. I have trouble. I have to have little graphs on my, on my desk to keep me from getting too crazy with this. But I urge you just to keep in mind, this is a dampening effect. I don't know that it's by design, but it works out that way to dampen the effects of any one year of a tax year blip as it lays out over the course of three years. When we analyze the income tax, this is a complicated process, and it's more by art than science. We evaluate by industry segment. We work by the NAICS, the NICS codes. And we're looking at withholding that people contribute from their paycheck. We're looking at capital gains that may be coming forth. We're looking at the impact of the Federal Tax Cut and Jobs Act. And that has had an interesting effect on local taxes because of the way the state and the federal government deal with standard deductions. And then there's another category. So between laying over the course of four years in four different categories, excuse me, laying over three years in four different categories and with the rate change, it's a pretty complicated process that the Budget Office goes through to try to figure out the net impact on any given fiscal year from income taxes. You'll see that we're showing a decrease for calendar year 20 by 4%. This is associated with a strong first quarter and everyone's expectation that by the end of this calendar year that we're putting the economy back together and we're going to be back on track. For calendar year 2021, which will start in nine months, we're looking at a 1% increase off of that diminished base. And then for the successive calendar year, calendar year 2022, a 3% increase. Here is our income tax revenue through years. And again, we have provided the, the normalized line adjusting for inflation, just to keep it in perspective. Permanent Public Improvement Fund. This was put into place last year. FY 21 will be the first year with projects. We'll talk about that more in depth when we get to the capital budget, but I thought it was highlighting now as it relates to the income tax collected. Recordation and Transfer Tax. This is the most volatile component of our revenue streams. It, it can move dynamically. There's some graphs later. We'll see where, where this will be really clear. Before the pandemic, we were noticing that the, the, the supply of property available for sale was tightening. And so that was affecting the volume. So this is a combination of, or a product of the volume of properties being transacted and their, their ultimate sales price. So when you see market supplies coming down, generally by supply and demand, you might expect prices to go up, which keeps things relatively constant in terms of the total price of transactions. So with the volume really contracting at this time of the year and probably going into fiscal year 21, we're expecting this to go down. We're not seeing this as a price or a value reduction, but we are seeing this as a volume contraction. So for FY 21, we've pulled it back about 7%, looking at $95 million in recordation and transfer taxes. We have seen several large commercial transactions, by the way, towards the end of FY 20, which have allowed us to keep FY 20 at the originally budgeted amount. So this is the trend over time of recordation and transfer tax revenue. You can see when we had the financial crisis in 2006, 7, 8, 9, that was a major hit to the transfer tax. When we get to the graph on the Revenue Reserve Fund, it'll look a whole lot like this. But you'll also see here in this year and our projection for FY 21, we are seeing the numbers, we are seeing the numbers come down. I talked about the two components of determining that revenue stream. This shows the number of units sold and the average price. As they're diverging here now, hopefully the product remains about the same. Volume of sales is going down. We are expecting, and most economists are expecting, at least in the short term, for prices to remain relatively stable. So we use several data sources to compile this. You can, we're looking at the MLS data set. We're looking at the Tax Office data. There are other, other sources that we use. You can also see that credit crunch when the orange line took that deep dive back in '06, '07, and '08. Mortgage interest rates. We track this weekly just as insight into what may be happening in the market. It doesn't really have a formulaic place, but it's insight for us into what's happening. State Shared Revenues. By legislation passed last year, highway user revenues is incrementally increasing. Table game revenue, one of the executive orders, closed gambling establishments. So for FY 20, we're seeing the game revenue take a substantial hit. Same with amusements and admissions taxes. When we're all practicing social distancing and are not allowed to convene in large groups, those revenues have taken a large hit. For FY 21, as I said, the highway user revenue, the HUR, is projected to go up incrementally. We are seeing a, we're projecting a decrease in our table games. The casinos are, are closed now. Admissions, we're projecting a decrease in that. That's theaters, bingo halls, shows, entertainment that you might, might find yourself enjoying. This is the history of our state shared revenue, that early bubble there, '05, '06 through '08. That was with the higher highway res, higher user revenues that we all enjoyed in the early years. Steep decline was when the state reset the formula for distribution of that. The little spike there for VLT, that was the first year for the video lottery terminal revenue. In each year thereafter, the VLT revenue has been assigned to a special revenue fund. And here again, you can see for FY 20 estimate and the 21 estimate, we're showing a much lower number. Local Sales Tax. This is the same, same thing. The pandemic and the executive orders have caused us to reduce our estimate here for the remainder of FY 20. And we're also showing a reduction in FY 21 as well. Here's a list for timeline for local sales tax for you. License and Permits. I don't have a text page describing this, but this is a component of our revenue. You'll see that FY 20 estimate, we have a, a lower number now. There's been a, there's been a heavy drop activity for development and approvals. It's going to bump back up in 21 for a couple of reasons. One, it'll be, you know, with the restart of the economy, construction will pick back up. We're also, as the County Executive pointed out in his presentation, looking at new rates, hoping those will become effective January 1st. It'll be half-year rates, and you'll see those proposals come forth in legislation later. Investment Income. We have taken that down a bit. Rates are down. We've also had here recently a little bit of cash crunch with delayed payments coming in and also with a slight delay in the bond sale that has been conducted successfully. By the way, there was a delay in it that caused a change in cash flow from where we might have been normally. Interfund reimbursement. Another line item in our revenue stream, the lion's share of that is the tax increment funds, or otherwise referred to as debt service recoveries. And we have seven tax increment districts. Six of them contribute surplus funds beyond their debt service and operating expenses. They contribute that surplus back to the general fund. The pension fund and the Retiree Health Benefit Trust Fund, they make a contribution back to the general fund to compensate for all of the staff time involved in managing those two funds. Revenue Reserve Fund. This is our last wall of defense. I mentioned earlier, the fall, the decline in its balance in '06, '07, '09, you can see that there clearly in association with the fall in the transfer tax revenue stream. So since then, we've been making heavy contributions to it. This is described in code with a formula. The balance of this, I'm going to paraphrase, needs to be no more than 5% of the projected recurring revenue for the forthcoming year. So our recurring revenue projection for FY 21 is $1,676.5 million. 5% of that comes out to about $83.8 million. We, this year, we are not able to fully fund the Revenue Reserve Fund to take it to its maximum capacity. However, we're very pleased that we are able to add $1 million to this. So the projected estimate in the Revenue Reserve Fund will be $80.9 million. It's $3 million short of the limit. The code specifies how and when this gets used. And basically, this is intended for an intra-year correction. And again, I'm going to paraphrase, but where your revenue projections, where your revenue actual collections come in short of your projections and where the county has pursued all reasonable efforts to adjust costs accordingly, the shortfall can be covered by the Revenue Reserve Fund. The County Executive can bring forth legislation at the council and ask for a transfer from Revenue Reserve Fund to the general fund. That's happened, as you can see, a couple of years. Otherwise, it, it stays there as our last wall of defense. This is a summary of our tax rate and fee rate change. As you can see, the top six line items, the percent change, negative numbers. Most of the rest of those numbers are equal to without increase from the prior year. It's only a handful there, the utility debt service funds, that will have a continuing rate change as they have every year. All right, our expenditure detail. This is the second leg of our budget tripod. Over the next two weeks, you will have the ability to look at each department's one by one to hear their expenditure details. So we're just going to look at a summary of expenditure detail here. This is a pie chart of our appropriations. Again, it is fundamentally the same as last year. The Board of Education did go up by a percent. General Government did drop by a percent from the last year. So just a little trade-off, not all that material. The debt service slice, 9%. We'll look at this in more detail later, but while you're looking at this, this pie chart, I wanted to point out that right at 55% of that debt service slice is for the Board of Education. About half of a percent of that, excuse me, about 5.4% of that 9% is for the community college. And the remainder, around 40% of the 9% is for the general county. So if we were to break that 9% slice into three slices, the Board of Education would be 5%. 9% slice into three slices, the Board of Ed would be 5%, Community College would be half a percent, and the county in general would be 3.5%. But in aggregate, we spend about 9% of our budget on debt service. Here are those slices from that pie chart as shown with dollars attached to them. So there again, that Board of Education, $748.1 million, that's the 44% number. And at the bottom, General Government, $251.8 million, that is the 14% number. I said we would have a listing of the new positions. Here are the 14 general fund positions. I can go into detail on these as you see fit. Yes, there are a couple of negative numbers in there. There are some transfers. There's a reconciliation adjustment for the Office of State's Attorney. I'll also say there were some position trades between departments that didn't show up in this chart. It seemed really unnecessary to show them moving around when I'm trying to talk about just new positions to the county. But there was a position moved from Central Services to Police Department. There was another position moved from Planning and Zoning to Transportation. So that's a net neutral, but it was a move between departments. Our pay package, you heard the county executive mention that. The bargaining units, there were 11 bargaining unit, new contracts this year. Each of them has their own array of merits and attributes, and it's really complicated to try to schedule them all out. So I just wanted to show some highlights here. There were scale adjustments, some other unique pay for each one. I'm sure we can get into detail later on them if you'd like. The estimated impact on our FY21 budget from these 11 new contracts is about $13.2 million. As a county executive reckoned, explained, the nonrepresented employees will receive the one-time supplement that totals about $2 million. That goes to county nonrepresented employees in the library. This increase, it really compares to our surrounding jurisdictions. Now, the surrounding jurisdictions do tax at a higher rate, and that has historically been a, a defense of why we had lower salaries. Not so sure that's a good argument, but that has been the argument. Hopefully, with competitive pay for these positions now, the turnover rate in our public service agencies will go down. We'll be able to hang on to people longer. And here's hoping that our staff has longer tenure and more experience with our communities. Debt service, mentioned this earlier, the summary. So these are the numbers behind that 9% slice. Compass Point is singled out. The Compass Point Golf Course, its interest is accounted for in the Recreation and Parks Department, while the $59.8 million is in the nondepartmental area of the budget. But combined, they represent just under 40% of the, of the total debt service for the county. Here's our debt service history. One of the things that I did with, drew by hand on my copy, I sort of drew a trend line on these. And you can see, when you look at the dark blue bars on this associated with the Board of Education, about 2012, the rate of increase really changed. And I'm assuming that relates to growth spurs in population, but their, their debt has really taken on a different slope, starting in 2012. The County General, the, the mid-color lines, or the orangey line, that started a different slope around FY19. And the shorter trend of lines, the dark orange, that's a pretty stable rate of increase. That's Community College. That's their contribution to the, the debt component at the county services. One of the things we look at with debt service is we say, gee, how do we look with our neighbors? So this is a map description as compiled by the Maryland Department of Legislative Services that shows how the jurisdictions in Maryland compare to each other. We are in that mid-blue, the 1% to 2% range. There are 10 other jur, there are a total of 10 jurisdictions out of 24 jurisdictions that are in that category. So you can see how we compare with our neighbors in terms of our debt that we carry as a percent of the assessable tax base. Debt service to operating revenue is another metric, and we'll look at these again when we get into the capital budget. But this trend is worth noting. The change from FY20 to FY21, when it jumps from 9 to 9.5, as this is a ratio, I think this revenue is more influenced by a reasonably flat revenue than by increasing debt. So that change was mostly driven by the fact that we haven't had our, our revenue go up in '21 quite the way it might have been expected. We still have to incur additional debt to keep going with our capital projects and to keep building schools. This is a quick summary of the Retiree Health and Benefit Trust contributions we've been making. The effort is to get this up to, up to the plan that it needs to be. This was started much later than the pension plan, and we're working harder to make the contributions as necessary and as contemplated. Our component units. We'll go into, take a quick look at how the component units look. Each of them will be presenting to you individually over the course of the next two weeks. I think Board of Ed is Monday. So here's the Board of Education component. There, other than the $748 million, that's our direct contribution, is the MOE contribution. There are other pieces of county spending that contribute to how we support our public schools. The debt service that I talked about earlier, the Health Department, the school nurses that the county executive spoke of during his presentation, that's pretty significant expense. And then, of course, we have the School Resource Officers and the Crossing Guards out of the Police Department. So about half of our budget in total goes to support our public schools. Here's how the Board of Education funding is composed. There's our piece at the top. That is just the MOE piece. This is not including the debt service or other slices. This is just pulling up to the MOE. The state contributes $404 million, and the other components there as shown. The additional funds that we provided this year, this is a combination of our incremental MOE and the incremental funding provided by the state. This adds up to $35.5 million, 14.8 of that was so those are the components that the county executive mentioned in his presentation that we would be funding this year. The Community College, this is how FY21 looks for them. We did look at some history. The county contribution has been on a reasonably steady up slope. The state contribution was on a shallower increase until a couple of years ago, when it took a pretty steep increase in contribution. The tuition increase has been trending, trending downward. I think it might not be unreasonable to expect that to go up. Maybe people will be wanting to retrain for a new profession, looking to, to take advantage of this pandemic to, to reset their careers. Library funding, the last of the component units. They will be presenting and explaining their budget in detail. Here's how it breaks down with all the different funding sources that the library has at its disposal. All right, let's put all the pieces together and look at a summary of our operating budget. So again, you can see our recurring revenue, the one-time revenue that I spoke of, that was a tax timing issue as the executive orders allow for delayed tax payments. The fund balance utilization that we'll take advantage of this year for our total revenue, and then our total appropriations, as we just reviewed, for a balanced budget. When we talk about one-time revenue utilization, there's the $5 million due to the timing, the fund balance, 42.7 of one-time revenue eligible. Here's what we did with it. We threw $10 million over the fence to the capital program for Pago. There are projects that deserve to be accounted for as capital projects, but really are not appropriate for bond financing, usually because they have a shorter useful life than the bond payout would be, and it doesn't make sense to pay for it after it's gone. So about $10 million of the capital program will benefit from this one-time revenue coming over to pay for shorter-lived products and projects. In our operating budget, we had about $6.6 million of expenditures that were reasonably considered one-time expenditures. So that comes out of the one-time money. We felt like we needed to beef up the self-insurance fund, so it's a one-time contribution of $1.2 million. And there's our revenue reserve contribution of $1 million. That left us with a structural deficit of 23.9. So when you start with a balanced budget, and your one-time revenue is greater than your one-time expenses, that pretty much results in that extra one-time, one-time revenue supporting recurring expenses in your operating budget. And that's the definition of a structural deficit. We are able to have a balanced budget this year, but that structural deficit will make each successive year a little more difficult to try to balance until we can overcome and reset where recurring revenue covers recurring expenses. Here's the history on our structural deficit. As you can see, it's not unusual for the county to have structural deficits, but it is uncomfortable in successive years and a stress on future years to have to accommodate that. The capital budget. This is our third leg of our budget tripod, the last of the three legs of the budget tripod. This is an extraordinarily complicated standalone piece of the budget. Your, your budget book, which you all have at your disposal in your offices now, 1,094 pages of capital budget. This is assembled with close coordination with Department of Public Works that helps with all the estimates. I was put together the timing of the projects in each department, and the component units, particularly Board of Education, all are very cooperative and very fundamental to putting together the, the capital budget. This is a complicated database that layers in different sets and pieces of information, the funding sources, the timing of it. It's really, really quite complicated. And Naomi has led this. We sort of left her out on an island doing this almost all by herself. But the capital budget is quite a piece of work, and I think we've got it in, in great shape. Our debt service, our debt structure, our capital project is a strong component leading to our AAA rating with Standard and Poor's. Back in late February, a group of us met with the rating agencies. The entire effort was headed by Karen McQuade, our controller. She handled it quite well, utilizing the resources in her office and also our outside bond consultants. And I want to share with you a few things that came out of the, the SNP rating summary. Strong financial position, very strong local economy, strong management team, conservative budgeting, strong budgetary performance, very strong institutional framework score, that's their internal scoring system, and a history of managing operating expenses well. Those are comments that Standard and Poor's has in their rating summary for Enron Lake County, and we should all be very proud of that. The debt affordability model. This leads the capital project campaign. This is part of the, the work of the Spending Affordability Committee, and they're looking at our revenue streams to determine what we can afford to spend. Late in February, after the Spending Affordability Committee had met initially, we were seeing an increase in one-time revenue that we might have, and also an increase in recurring revenue that the county, this was before the pandemic hit. But later in February, our math indicated that we could potentially take that new authorization, that top line, from 163 million to 170. At that point in time, the Budget Office made the conservative decision, nope, let's stay where it is, and maybe by FY24, four years out, we can increase our affordability to 170. So that turned out to be a good decision in retrospect because of the pandemic strike and what our affordability might be. So we're still at the 163 in affordability. This page is mostly an analysis-type page. That middle block that you see there, those are our established affordability ratios and guidelines in the first column, 11.5% debt services percent of revenues, 2% debt as a percent of full value, debt as a percent of personal income, and debt per capita. So the ensuing numbers there, year by year, compare what we're budgeting against those guidelines. That debt as a percent of full value, our guideline of 2%, you can see for FY21, we're 1.5%. I might refer you back to the map we saw earlier with the shades of blue that showed that 10 out of 24 jurisdictions in Maryland were in that 1% to 2% range, and we're holding right in the middle of that range, right in the middle of the 1% to 2%. So we're, we're doing quite well. As I, as I said, this is a page of analysis, sort of sets the stage for the capital budget. When we look at the use of bonds and the use of Pago, there are many other funding streams that we use, impact fees, there are other school funding sources. But this, we're focusing just on bonds and Pago here. So at the top, those first several lines, you saw those before. That's our, what we can afford. That second line, use of funds from prior year, you'll see that minus $58 million. That is, that's fundamentally representing an overspend in the prior year. And the year before that, the number was $73 million there. The very bottom number in that same column, $41 million, that is our overspend for this year. A strategy that we have started pursuing is to determined effort to stretch that out and try to have each year fit its own affordability, instead of just looking at the aggregate over six years. We do need to have a six-year plan for our capital improvement, but each year should be able to stand on its own. For the last several years, the spending has been very front-loaded, but it always came out okay in the aggregate over the to, over the timeframe of six years. I think this has led to a higher debt than we might have otherwise. That's my opinion. But I think that the, the conservative thing to do here is to try to have each year fit its affordability column. So through the last two years and this year, we've moved from $73 million overspend to $58 overspend to this year, $41 overspend. And I'm hoping I bring you an even better number next year. But I wanted to highlight that. You can see the, that bottom line is cumulative effect of comparing what we're proposing to spend against what our affordability number is in aggregate. Over the course of six years, we are underspent by over $3 million. Our permanent public improvement fund. Mentioned this earlier. This is where we have allocated PPI funding for projects. And I need to point out that in some cases, the PPI funds represented the full project cost. In other cases, the PPI fund paid for a portion, and another portion may have come from regular bonding like we do, may have come from a school funding source, may have come from state funding for road projects. So don't construe these numbers as the total cost of a project, but it's the contribution that the PPI is making to these projects. The top three line items, those are all education-related. They total, I'll do the math for you, $125 million from those top three line items. The next five line items, those are our public safety category, those total $50 million. And the bottom five line items add up to $75 million. So the total is our $250 million that we anticipated being able to cover with the PPI fund. Our capital budget program, this will show in easy-to-digest format where we're putting our capital money for FY21. And by class, each of those slices of the pie is a class. This is how we separate out the different capital projects. This is how we uh, separated out the different capital projects initially is my class. So you'll notice there, Board of Education, forty, or forty four percent. That has traditionally been and continues to be roughly the same as the operating expense allocation. We roughly spend about the same amount on capital projects as a proportion of the whole as we spend an operating budget as a portion of the whole operating budget. You can see some of the others, we're spending uh, a good deal of money on roads and bridges, that seems appropriate, community college down at the bottom has a good slice. Recreation and parks has a good slice, as does public safety. There are the numbers as they show up by class uh, in numbers, so those first two columns, the dollars and the percent particularly correlate to what you just saw on the pie chart. That is our total capital budget, three hundred fifty two million dollar spend in F Y twenty one. We thought it wise to compare that to the six year total. Uh, a couple of things I wanted to, to um, to point out on that, for instance, the Board of Education seems a little light in F Y twenty one. But that's just a timing issue, over the course of six years, they're right at forty four percent, which correlates uh, whether by, by design or by uh, by accident, roughly correlates to what we spend out of our operating budget on the Board of Education. You'll also notice that community college seems a little front loaded, we are working on their life sciences building, it's a big project. And it has brought their spend forward in the six year plan. Recreation and parks at ten percent, that was a surprise to me, but I'm glad that we're supporting our parks and recreation facilities, roads and bridges right at fifteen percent. Major enterprise funds, there'll be a lot more detail on this as you go into um, your department reviews and your other fund reviews. These are just some pie charts that will show the uh, the enterprise funds. So that's our closing. Your um, your budget team, together with each and every department and under the guidance and direction of the executive team. We've built the best budget we can, we've uh, been under extreme pressure with these circumstances and feel like we've come through with something that can work for all of us. We're confident that it's balanced, that it's responsible, that leans into the services we need right now. It's just a snapshot, it's just a roadmap, our conditions are fluid, they're changing and we will find ways to adjust. The budget team is looking forward to working with the audit team to uh, make sure we haven't made any errors, to make sure we haven't made any omissions in the development of this budget. And I'm sure that the administration is looking forward to working with council to refine the initiatives and policies if necessary and as appropriate. So that's all, uh, if you all made it through that, thank you so much for your patience with me. We will have all of these documents posted um, coming up on our website. Madam Chair, back to you please.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate. The next forty five days, we're probably gonna keep you busy as well, so um, I know you've got, I think you've got some of your budget team with you and I also want to let my colleagues know that Mr. Chris Trumbauer with the administration is also in a waiting room to answer any questions that are related more towards policy than budget, but um, I'm sure that there's numerous questions, so this is your opportunity to ask them. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Beecham, that was very thorough, very helpful, I really appreciate all the effort that, that you all have put into this. Um, I just have one question, you mentioned on the structural deficit that it may make people feel uncomfortable. That is certainly my sentiment, it makes me feel very uncomfortable, so my only question is sort of looking forward. Um, are we looking forward, what would be the plan for next year to come out of that structural deficit? Or are we sort of hoping that the economy will be a bit better next year and we'll have more revenue and it will naturally come out, do we, have, have we looked at that at all?
Well, as you saw in that graph over time, um, you know, a uh, structural deficit is not an unusual circumstance. And as you pointed out, it is an uncomfortable position to be in. All of the indications are that by calendar year twenty one, our economy is on the rebound and is resetting and on the growth, the uh, intertech, International Monetary Fund shows the U S GDP growth in calendar year twenty one stronger than it has been over the last course of a couple of years, so they're expecting a, a pretty strong reset, so to the technical answer to your question, yes, I think in forthcoming years, we'll have the opportunity for recurring revenue to be incrementally higher than we may need to assign uh, recurring expenses. And we can um, seek to overcome that structural deficit.
One quick follow up, thank you so much, and that, that holds true even though, like you said, uh, sort of any revenue is, we see it in three years, so even if the economy does grow in twenty twenty one, we really will only have a piece of that moving forward to next year's fiscal budget.
Correct, you know, and the um, the fiscal deficit, as uncomfortable it is, it's thankfully, it's not a major piece of the pie. You know, it's a little over one percent, one and a half percent of the overall budget, so um, it's not a place you want to be, but it's one that I think the strength of our economy and the strength of Enron County that we can overcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was trying to wait to allow others to go first because I have lots of questions, so if anybody else wants to jump in, please feel free.
Well, go ahead and ask a question and we'll get the conversation going and Mr., I just want to remind everybody to state their name for their folks listening as you answer questions from the administration, thank you, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor for one question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, uh, District Three. Mr. Beecham, again, I, I second what Councilwoman Harris said and appreciate the overview and, and the thoroughness with which your office and your team put that together. One of the things that I noted on page five of your presentation, talking about the estimated revenue is that as of the estimate that you had in April, it looks like you were about ten million dollars under what was um, budgeted in terms of the total amount. You had budgeted one point six nine, six point one uh, billion dollars for the budget and you were looking at revenue coming in at one point six eight six. So if you are already ten million off on that, based on the COVID uh, situation. I, I guess I just wanted to confirm, one, that I'm reading it correctly, that we do look like we're about ten million off, and then two, um, you know, I, I appreciate the optimism, um, but I read a report this morning from CNN, Maggie Fox, expert report predicts up to two more years of pandemic misery, that was at ten fifty eight A M. this morning. Um, so frankly, I'm, I'm not nearly as optimistic as maybe the budget office or the administration that this is a blip and everything's going to be back to normal next year. Um, so with that said, I guess my two questions would be, you know, with that intro. Am I correct that we're off ten million based on the F Y twenty budget estimates for revenue? And then further, um, you know, what sources are you all looking at to suggest that we're going to bounce right back next year? Because I've seen things from the I M F that suggest something completely different.
Well, let me uh, answer your questions in sequence here, looking at page five, which was the F Y twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty estimated revenue comparing the approved to our, our current and revised estimate. You'll notice the line item indented operating revenue, million six forty three was the original uh, budget. A million six forty four is the um, the revised estimate. So in actuality, we're suggesting that F Y twenty twenty will wind up at or just ever so slightly ahead of the original budget.
Okay.
You're seeing the ten million dollar difference is we are therefore not needing to call on the available fund balance. The fifty two point nine fund balance that was available for us to use in F Y twenty. We're not needing to call on it as much because of that ever so slight increase in revenue and an underspend, a correlation underspend in our operating expenses, so I hope that explains to you the ten million.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
I'm sorry?
That makes sense, thank you.
Yep, in terms of optimism, this sounds silly, but I don't think you'll find optimism to be a personality trait of anybody in budget. It's just not the, it's not the way we're wired, that's why we're doing this uh, and not doing what you're doing, because we're not optimists. But we try to rely on all the data sources at our disposal, I could go into a long list of uh, of where we reach for information, I don't have that list in front of me, but I can pull it together for you if you'd like. Um, we do rely on a lot of sources. As the county executive alluded to, this is not an optimistic revenue projection, nor is it a sandbagged revenue projection. The budget office has worked extra hard to try to come up with the best estimate we can as of April sixth, and I acknowledge to you that variables have changed since April sixth and those are ones we'll have to adjust to accordingly, as we've said, as the county executive said, this is our roadmap. There's a snapshot in time, part of that snapshot was from two or three weeks ago. And we're just gonna have to make adjustments as we can, we are still confident in these numbers, we understand that there may be soft spots here and there. But um, I, I still have confidence in this budget.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Pruski has asked that I inform you that unfortunately he has to leave the meeting. And he asked that I thank Mr. Beecham on his behalf for his presentation.
Thank you, I believe Ms. Fiedler had a question?
Uh, Councilman Volkey actually addressed, my concern was, is the information out there and um, the overconfidence then in the next year, we're gonna quickly bounce back, but um, thank you for your answer, I appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna give everybody a minute to formulate any more questions, but um, I'm not, oh, Mr. Volkey has another question, okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as I said, I, I have lots, I'm just, I, I want to try to give everyone else a chance like we've discussed, so. Um, that said, Mr. Beecham, what is the uh, pay package that has been negotiated between police and fire that they'll be receiving in this budget?
I don't have the details in front of me to describe to you, they were complicated pay packages that involved scale adjustments. Several specific types of stipends and pay adjustments, whether they were on call, whether it was a different overtime ratio, whether it is really complicated. And I know that personnel and outside uh, resources took considerable time and effort to negotiate the best deal possible for the county.
I, I'd heard that they were going up eleven percent, is that right?
Between all of the contributions to um, to a pay package and how they math out over the course of the year, that could be a correct number, I don't have that information in front of me at this moment. But we can dive into those details as we get to them. Um, as it, as I said earlier, you know, this was a um, an occasion to try to be consistent with our neighbors, it is expensive and it's painful, especially this year for Enron County. But I think that was the objective, was try to, to get us set competitive with neighboring jurisdictions. And hopefully that works to our county's benefit by reducing the turnover rate. Uh, and also by helping build that foundation and that tenure of experience with each of those professionals in uniform.
A, a, and I certainly appreciate that, I, and, and I'm not trying to say that these men and women do not deserve that. I think the question I'm getting to is an equity question, one that the county executive is hammered on frequently. Which is this idea that we should be trying to treat people, you know, in a fair and equitable way. And my concern is that the vast majority of the county, if I understood from the county executive's budget address is going to see about a fifteen hundred dollar um, sort of one time pay to them, which I'm, I'm not clear whether that counts toward their pension uh, and, and other calculations in terms of salary for that. Or if that's sort of a one off payment that then doesn't kind of add to their uh, their base salary going forward. We're also seeing that the teachers are getting only one step, you know, and so there are a number of things like that. And then when we look over and we see that there's one bargaining unit that's getting a very big slice of the uh, increased uh, revenue pie. I guess I'm just curious what the administration's decision was and, and sort of the thought process on why that was happening. So that might be a policy question for Mr. Trumbauer, I see him raising his hand.
Yeah, I, I also want to remind my colleagues that we're, we have two weeks of budget presentations coming, um, where we will be having every department before us. But I will certainly give the, yield the floor to Mr. Trumbauer for further explanation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office, I was essentially gonna say something very similar to you, that Mr. Volkey, the Personnel Department will be before you in the next uh, few uh, weeks. So we'd be happy to have an in-depth conversation at that point, uh, with the benefit of having our Personnel Officer there as well, uh, who led negotiations. But I will confirm that the county executive's goal during the contract negotiations was to look at surrounding jurisdictions and try and make sure that Enron County was not an outlier. And as Mr. Beecham had stated earlier, um, these negotiations were done earlier this year in the spring before the COVID crisis was apparent. And um, so at that time, the negotiations were complete. The administration was pleased that we didn't have to go to arbitration with any of the unions. Uh, and then literally a matter of days after that is when the economic uh, pinch began to happen. And so um, you know, we fully funded all negotiations in this budget, it wasn't easy to do, but, but we did it, we honored our commitments. Um, um, but this budget is before the council now and you are obviously the final fiscal authority. But I would encourage you to um, have a more detailed conversation about these when um, personnel comes before you.
Sure, thank you. Madam Chair, may I continue? Is anybody else?
Um, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I believe Ms. Fiedler had a question.
Oh. Fantastic, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, um, Mr. Trumbauer, this is a follow up to that question. In the county executive's presentation, when he was talking about the negotiated um, terms from bargaining units, he said something to the effect of if this had happened after COVID, the results would have been different, can you kind of explain or go into detail what those comments meant on, would it have been different on behalf of the administration or on the bargaining units?
So I, so, so, so thank you, um, Councilwoman, again, Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office, um, I, I don't, I don't want to speak exactly for the county executive, but I'm pretty familiar with, with his mindset and I can say that when the extent of the COVID crisis and the economic impact became clear, everything was different. So every decision changed and I think what he was, what he was saying in his address was that that, the decision and the negotiations that happened around those decisions were pre-COVID. So that's when we thought we had a hundred and one million dollars of incremental revenue, that's when we didn't um, foresee all these other consequences. If, if the county executive was in those negotiations at the current time, knowing what we do now, I think it's very possible that they would have ended up differently. But that's not the case, um, we successfully negotiated with the bargaining units, we came to an agreement with them and we're honoring our commitment in this budget that's before you. And I would encourage you, if, if you like, I know that county executive has spoken with each of you individually about the budget and he maintains um, accessibility. If, if you wanted to talk to him directly and ask him about those comments, I'm sure he'd be happy to take your call.
Thank you.
Ms. Lacy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Beecham, do you have any projections or plan to do more projections concerning the revenue from recordation and transfer taxes? Cause I'm thinking about over the next couple of years and we might have an idea of what, what those, what that number might be for next year. But a couple of years out, I, I am thinking we might see a mixture of uh, both COVID nineteen impacts and development policy impacts, and so I'm wondering what you're anticipating out, say by, you know, F Y twenty three or a little further out from there.
We do have a long range operating budget projection in the budget book that reaches out six years. And we do look at each line in that individually. The line that you're referring to, recordation and transfer tax, uh, that is a particularly interesting one at this time. If you follow, let me back up and say by virtue of my role on the pension board. A strong component of our pension investment is in, in real estate. And so reading the updates and participating in webinars that those fund managers are talking about. You know, some of them looking out in those years you're referring to, were talking about a reset in the way we all look at real estate. And so it, it's a fascinating question, we will be revising our estimates, uh, perhaps quarterly based on what information comes in. And see if we need to make corrections in, in our uh, Enron County budget, but it is a fascinating subject to look at. and see if we need to make corrections in, in our Anaronda County budget. But it is a fascinating subject to look at and how this pandemic might change the way society uses real estate and what blend of real estate finds itself in an upwardly valuable position and what might be in declining value.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking at page 21 of the, the presentation where it talks about income tax revenue. And again, one of the things that you said is that you're expecting that you're gonna see a pretty good bounce back in terms of the income revenue because the economy is gonna pick up quickly. But one of the estimates that you have in there has an increase of only 1% in calendar year 2021. I recognize that you spread income tax projections over three years. And so that's part of what you're looking at is that, you know, for FY21, some of the revenues come in this year, some next year, some the following, and you have to sort of try to juxtapose that with calendar years. But I, I just was sort of struck by that, that if there is this true expectation that the economy is gonna bounce right back later this year and kind of get back to where it was before, why the thought that in calendar year 2021, you're gonna see such a decrease in, in the revenue from income tax?
Good here. There we go. For, for calendar year 21, you know, we've been through a couple of months now of lockdown, more or less. And that may be lifted in a week, maybe five weeks, maybe six weeks, we're not sure. But there will be a substantial hit. I think there's gonna be some reset. When you look at the NICS codes for Anaronda County, vis a vis the state at large, vis a vis the country, Anaronda County is in, in a good place. We have a large number of, of jobs and personnel that are involved in government roles and in professional roles. And part of our math sees a continuing organic growth in that line item. We're unfortunately seeing a lot of suffering in the entertainment and the food services industry. And so those offset to a certain extent. Again, this, making this sort of projection in the income tax area is more art than science. But we try to lean on as many data sets as we can and projections. And again, we're showing a pretty good hit right now as our economy is at standstill, but we're suspecting that it will come back.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot I had this question for you, Mr. Beecham. Does the Standard and Poor's AAA bond rating and their analysis take into account structural deficits that we have had over, say, the past decade, whatever you've studied? And has that analysis impacted our bond rating, to your knowledge?
You know, as I read their report, I can only infer that some of their comments are geared around how we responded to and how we managed those structural deficits. And so I think when they talk about our budgetary performance, our management performance, I think they are reflecting on how we handled that and how we dealt with that. They certainly have all of the information to know we had them.
Thank you, that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey again. So Mr. Beecham, talking about the structural deficit, page 56 of your presentation, you do show the nice history of how, you know, it, I, I can see the argument here where it tries to normalize the idea of structural deficits in Anaronda County budgeting history. But I do sort of, I, I noticed that this chart goes back to FY10, and I'm not sure whether that was just as much room as you could fit or, you know, if, if there was more information before that. But historically, as we know, FY10 was really one of the first budgets after the major recession, the Great Recession. And then thereafter, these structural deficits were getting, you know, sort of smaller and smaller. I know that in the last 12 budgets, this is going to be the third largest structural deficit that this county has run, second only to FY10 and FY12. And so when I looked at this, it sort of strikes me as a better comparison point to try to see where we are in the, the history of this. If we were able to look at maybe the FY7 or the FY6 budgets, where we could then go back and say, right before we knew there was a looming fiscal cliff, as we were sort of eyeing that things were going up, 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 maybe a little too quickly, how were we doing in terms of the county? Were we running structural deficits or were we not? Because I can understand why it was happening after the recession happened and how they had to do things. But to me, it almost seems like we're trying to normalize this structural deficit this year by comparing it to a history coming out of the Great Recession, without actually looking at where we really are in the process, vis a vis the last recession that we saw. So I don't know if that data is available and if you all could produce that, but I, I would find it very helpful because I think it would at least give us perspective. Because at this moment, I do think that we're eyeing a fiscal cliff and we've not yet gone over it. But we're all predicting we're about to go over it and, and it could potentially last for a while. So to me, that's where I have a major problem with knowing that's coming, running a structural deficit this year with the hope and expectation that next year, everything will just poof, back to normal. And, and we'll be okay and be able to backfill that structural deficit. I see this as a much bigger problem. So if you want to speak to that and, and the analysis that your office did potentially prior to FY10, I, I'd appreciate that.
I'm sure we have that data and will work to pull that together for that longer trend. I was looking for the page that showed the balance in the rainy day fund. And it seemed like it was taken into utilization primarily in '08 and '09. So, oh, so 2010 might have been a year that we didn't tap the rainy day fund. And I'm going off memory, so pardon me if I missed that.
It's page 35 if you want to look at it, Mr. Beecham.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Seemed like 2010 was a year we were coming back out. And it would be interesting to see, as you've pointed out, if in those prior years, there was a deeper structural deficit. So we'll pull that together and look at that. And it looks like 2010 through the course of '09, we utilized, the second year that we utilized Revenue Reserve Fund, 2010, we didn't, and it started increasing from there. So we'll, we'll pull that analysis together for you. Thank you for bringing that up. In terms of the optimism, we're going off the data sets we have, we're applying the art that we have. We have to be confident that this is, as those professionals that look at this more deeply than we can afford to are, are telling us the right thing. And it's, as we've said, it's a moving target.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office. Councilman Volkey, you, you asked an excellent question. And I know that Mr. Beecham is gonna give you the, the data point, but I wanted to add a little bit of perspective from my time when I was serving on the council. Since 2010, you know, we, our understanding at that time was that the, the county had fairly regularly run a structural deficit. And through the eight years that I was privileged to sit on the council, both of those councils, those two four-year councils, worked hard to get rid of that structural deficit. And as you saw towards the end of the last administration and carried on last year, in the first year of the Pittman administration, we ran a surplus for the first time. And that was kind of, I think, a crowning achievement of over a decade of policy. So what we're seeing now is a return to the deficit because as Mr. Beecham's presentation pointed out, the revenue drop this year was, was drastic. And so what we did is we went kind of back to the old practice of using some one-time revenue to shore that up. And you correctly point out that, that on the chart that Mr. Beecham showed, this is the third largest deficit that's recorded. But I would, I would be so bold as to say this is the first largest economic crisis, you know, on that chart as well. So I know that it can look jarring, and I can say from the administration's standpoint, again, two, three months ago, we did not envision having a deficit at all. But in the, the choices that we had to make in the limited amount of time we had, we worked with the budget office, you know, to put this budget together. And we acknowledge that we are running a structural deficit. And we look forward to working with the council over time to bring that back to normal.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Mr. Beecham has raised his hand.
Sure, if I may add something, the comparison to the financial crisis in '08, '09 may not be a good correlation. As I had mentioned earlier, that was a fundamental flaw in the component of the economy, in a sector of the economy that dealt with financial debt facilities and debt structure. We had a fairly healthy economy going into this. This isn't an economic sector that's failing us. This is a health-driven impact. The budget impact is, is collateral damage for the health crisis that we're suffering. And so to the point that the health of our community is able to return, we expect the economy to come back in some reasonable semblance. It may take a little time, it may be a ramp up. But the good news about where we are now, this is not driven by a flaw in a sector of the economy.
Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Chair, if I might interrupt for one moment, Ms. Rodvian has asked me to let you know that she too has had to leave the meeting. And she also thanks Mr. Beecham for his presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Councilman Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have year-to-year data on our bond ratings going back, you know, 2010 to match up with the associated years in the presentation?
We may, but I haven't seen that information. I'll see if we can pull it together.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Beecham, I appreciate what you're saying. And I've heard some similar comments from economists and, and other people who are assessing the impact of this pandemic, who have analogized it more to what you would see in light of a natural disaster instead of an economic downturn. So I understand your point there. The only thing that I would caution with is, you know, we can look at places like Puerto Rico and, and some of the other places in the Caribbean over the last few years where they've seen massive natural disasters, that the recovery has taken a very long time. And I think that this may be less like a hurricane or a tornado and more like something along those lines because of the long-term impact. You know, assuming that this does not allow, if we don't find a vaccine or a cure in the next few months, we could easily be looking at this situation stretching on for a more prolonged period of time. And in that case, I do think that the hit is going to look more like a recession or, or a very long natural disaster. So just something for the budget office to consider. That's, that's all I'm putting there. I did want to ask you, as my question, page 35, again, turning to the Revenue Reserve Fund. You noted the level where we are in terms of the reserve fund, the, the cap being at 5% and the, the budget revenues that you're looking at. The way I did the math, I think we're very close to the 5% threshold. So I guess my question to you would be this. I heard from the Spending Affordability Committee Chair that it would make sense to increase the, the ceiling, if you will, on the Revenue Reserve Fund. And I agree with that. That's why I'm gonna be putting something into that effect, along with some of my colleagues. I, I think that my question to you would be, I realize you're putting a million in this year to that. If the ceiling was higher, would you recommend putting more money into the Revenue Reserve Fund, considering that we expect that this downturn could potentially be longer if we're really looking at the most conservative way to budget?
The recommendation would not be available for this year. I'm sorry?
What if it were available for this year?
Well, that would be a policy question, and I defer to Mr. Trumbauer for that. But I work within the limits of, of the code and what it allows us to do and work within the constraints of what one-time revenue we may have at our disposal and how most efficiently to deploy it. But that would be a policy question for Chris.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Beecham, before Mr. Trumbauer chimes in, I, I'd like to know what, what budget appropriation would be needed to reach the five, the current 5% threshold for the rainy day fund, if, if you, if you don't mind?
Approximately $3 million additional dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office. So Councilman Volkey, back before the bottom dropped out of our revenue projections, we had intended to maximize the rainy day fund. But as you heard, Mr. Beecham said, you know, we ended up just putting in a million dollars. And my understanding is, up until the last minute, we, we were contemplating putting nothing in. But through the balancing and everything else, there was some funds available, and that was the most conservative place to put it. Your proposal of raising the ceiling of the reserve fund is a valid policy debate. But I have, I have to caution the council, you know, this year, there was no, there was no money to do it. And if, if you're correct in your theory that the economic crisis is going to be long and a slow recovery, my question back to you is where are you gonna get the money to do it in the future? We, you can raise the ceiling all you want. You can make it 7%, 10%, 20%. You still have to have the cash to put in the fund. And right now, the policy decision that the administration made was, you know, we used our fund balance and other one-time money in other places to shore up the budget. So we did not have the luxury of, of getting them to the, the reserve fund this year. But we, we were able to, to put a budget before you that doesn't propose to tap into the fund. So and in fact, as Mr. Beecham said, it modestly adds to it. So the administration believes in a strong Revenue Reserve Fund. You know, our goal was to, to achieve the current maximum of 5%, but we're not able to realize that in the proposed budget before you know.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. I wanted to ask if I could take a minute. We are seeing a lot of federal stimulus and we, we received $101 million and we're, we're still sort of figuring out how that can actually be utilized. I realize we're probably not gonna be able to do much change to the current budget year, but do we see this $101 million of, of COVID relief coming from the Treasury or, or future potential stimulus coming from the federal government being utilized in the coming year in a, in a supplementary budget in some way that would recalibrate where we are?
The, the Cares Relief Fund is not eligible to replace lost revenue. So we won't be able to apply any of that money into the 21 budget for that perspective. To the extent that any staff has been redirected for the COVID response effort, there's a possibility through an accounting work to apply for reimbursement to compensate for that because that would be staff effort foregone. But we cannot use it to replace lost revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, oh, Ms. Lacy, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Beecham, I wonder if you can give us a little bit more description or illumination on this. Hang on, one, one. So we're concerned about the accuracy or degree of conservatism in the revenue estimates that, as far as personal income, right? I think we've been discussing that a lot and the concern of how quickly is our economy, our county economy going to recover? And one of the things I heard you say at the beginning of your presentation was that you actually expect us to recover in a shorter time period because the high percentage of jobs in our county that are, that are federal jobs and, you know, in some way, whether that's military or, or civilian, however it is, point being that they provide a pretty steady source of income. It just occurred to me that an, an analogy we might look back to would be during the times of federal shutdown. Because, you know, we had pretty lengthy shutdowns that that really impacted our federal workforce and their incomes and caused severe disruption for those, for those families. And I think for however long it was that that lasted in the past couple of years, that we, we saw an impact on our budget. So when I hear you say your forecast is conservative going forward, and yet we're better off because we have this steady source of of personal income from our, from our residents, which makes sense to me. I just want to make sure we're sort of thinking of similar ideas of conservative forecasts. Because to me, I think as long as then those, the federal income, so for example, my husband works and receives a federal income. And so that means, you know, we've been okay paying our mortgage. And so, that means, you know, we've been okay paying our mortgage because he's still being paid. But when there's been a government shutdown, that's when we're concerned about it. It has a different ripple effect. And I just, I know, sorry, this is going on and on, but I'm trying to put together, you know, we we're talking about different sources of information that we are all reviewing, different economists, different media sources. And we know our local economy better than anybody else. So, can you, can you perhaps explain a bit more your confidence, which is different from optimism, right? But your confidence in in those income numbers based on your knowledge of our local circumstances?
Well, I think you heard Mr. James talk about this in his Spending Affordability Committee report, that one of the underpinnings of the strength of the county's personal income stream was the federal government, state government and county government and City of Annapolis government employees. So, in this time, you know, that that can reasonably be assumed as a foundation. And you raise an interesting point. We had discussed that informally in the Budget Office about this being the flip side of the federal shutdown. And you can look at what income was lost or foregone during that and then take that as part of the math of what you might can assume as as constant in the short term going forward. So, you you raise a very interesting point on that. But we use a lot of different sources of data. And as I said, the the NEX codes and the employment base and the salaries and wages that come from those, the W2s that come out of those different positions. Those are part of the data stream that helps us come up with our calculation. And again, two underlying beneficial things in the math here. We have the full force and effect of the rate change that the county enforced last year, took into account last year. And we also have this layering in where any one tax year impact is spread over three fiscal years.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Volkey's been waiting patiently to ask his 10th question.
I think it's only about six, but but that's fine. I I may have more. Mr. Beecham, so I I want to understand something that I thought I understood last year and I may not have understood the way I did. When we did the budget last year, as I recall it, the property tax rate was somewhere around .901. Or the other way that you all say it is 90.1. I I think that's that was the rate, something like that. County Executive went over that rate because there is obviously the property tax cap. But under state law, you're allowed to go over the tax cap if the money is for education. And so, I believe that's what he did, is he went over that rate. He took us up to .935 and that was the rate. This year, because of the constant yield, it's coming down to .934. But what I had understood last year and may have misunderstood was that it was going to come back, right? And that the rate was going to hit back around .901. And then if the county executive wanted to override that cap again for education, he'd have to do it again in the subsequent year. What it looks like has actually happened is that by virtue of what the county executive did last year and the council approved, that's now reset the tax cap up to .935 for just about anything. And the money that's come in now isn't just being used for education, it could be used for any other thing. So, it almost seems to me like it's it's a, I don't want to call it a bait and switch, but it's the idea that you can say, I'm going to go over the tax cap for education in year one, but now I've reset the level. Now, I've got all that extra revenue. I could go over the tax cap again if I wanted to for education and continue resetting the level up. But I'm not accountable to have to say that portion of the increase that was attributable in year one, now in year two is only for education. Did I, did I miss something there? Am I not understanding that correctly?
I see Mr. Trumbauer would like to weigh in.
If if I may, Madam Chair, Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office. So, Mr. Volkey, I think the part of the equation that you're missing in the question, because of the county, because of the State Maintenance of Effort Law, every dollar we put into the school system carries over to the next year, compounds. And so, so we 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 went up last year and we have to keep funding that. And so, the county executive, I I remember last year, explained his increase to to make that additional contribution to the Board of Ed. And that that will carry forward under the Maintenance of Effort Law. What what he, what you said that I wasn't quite clear on is that the amount would fall back. I think the county executive last year was clear that this, that his actions on that property tax rate, he considered them as a corrective action for the previous four times that the rate had been lowered beneath the revenue cap level. And so, this year's budget goes back to the longstanding county policy through Republican and Democrat executive alike to set the property tax rate at the revenue cap level. And that, as Mr. Beecham explained, meant that the rate dropped ever so slightly this year. But that, this this budget is consistent with what the county executive proposed last year going forward. I feel confident saying that.
Okay. And and as a follow-up, Mr. Trumbauer, thank you. That's helpful. I I guess the reason I had understood the way I thought I had understood it is because I believed it was a one-time corrective action. I I had thought that was the way it was explained. It sounds like it was actually a permanent corrective action. So, now that I understand that, it makes more sense going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised. Are my council colleagues ready to dismiss Mr. Beecham? Okay, well, great. Well, Mr. Beecham, thank you so much for the work of you and your team. I look forward to asking you many, many, many questions over the coming weeks, along with my colleagues. And I'm sure you are already communicating with Madam Auditor. So, thank you in advance for the work ahead. We're going to move ahead in our meeting today. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Seeing no movement, may I have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved. Volkey?
May I have a second?
Second, Fiedler.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No one has opposed. The motion carries. I want to tell everyone watching and listening to please continue to check the county website for important messages and updates regarding future meetings. The County Council is now adjourned until 1:00 PM on Monday, May 4, 2020. Thank you so much. Have a great day.